Six o'clock, we'll go ahead and get started. Councilmember Coke?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ready?
Yeah.
Burkhardt?
Here.
First item on the agenda is a closed session per Iowa Code Section 21. A strategy with council in matters likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of our mental body in that litigation.
Second.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yep.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Pass. On development concept for 11, 622 Northwest Towner Drive.
I'll just come up here to introduce Fritz Trost as well as Philip to talk about their potential development here up on Highway 141. Purpose of tonight's meeting is really just to give you a sense of what they're thinking about and get any preliminary feedback for the project as we kind of work through a lot of the details here in the the coming few months. Yeah, I think we've got a couple of documents that they can pull up there. So Fritz, come on up.
Good evening.
Hi.
Good evening.
Thanks for the opportunity to share. This has been a project that I've been working on for several years. And as I think the last time we had, I was on a Zoom call last year at some point talking about some of the various attributes of the project and really excited to present tonight most recent development of the work. And one of the things I mentioned was really trying to visualize what it is we're trying to create. I'm really excited tonight to present what Philip Wleger has been able to help produce. We've worked with Elder Butsky with soil, soil engineering. We've done about twenty plus soil borrowings at ARP with civil engineering consultants. We've done a lot of work with the zoning map. We've done a lot of work with neighbors and folks like that to make sure what we're doing works with the development. And then, of course, a lot of the, a lot of meetings with the staff. And part of the most exciting developments have been the realization that the various bounding areas of the site, if you look at the proposed site there in orange and then that block in green, that's forty acres that the city of Grimes owns. And on that, they have water wells. And the realization that what if we could cooperate with the city of Grimes? Because our plan has congealed into within the hundred and forty-five acres of our site, we've basically taken thirty of those acres and set that aside for parkland, water filtration, recreation area. We thought, wouldn't it be exciting to work with the city of Grimes, try to see if we could cooperate? Because we know that with the development of our site, we know that people are going to be walking on that Grimes forty. And so we thought, what if we could cooperate with the city of Grimes and work with them rather than like maybe put a fence or something like that, right? And we found the city of Grimes to be really cooperative. And so basically, our hundred and forty-five acre site you see there in orange, along with that, that green forty, we've had several meetings with the city of Grimes staff and economic development director. And they're very excited to cooperate with us and our project. And that has really expanded the project into some exciting opportunities for the city of Johnston. And so tonight, I just wanted to thank you all here, staff and everyone. And Philip Wleger, I would like to invite up and he's gonna do the bulk of, bulk of the and of course, if you have any questions, we'd love
Adam Mayer and members of the council, we're really excited to be here and presenting to you a master plan. And not even a requested master plan, we're coming on our own. So that's a little bit of a unique phenomenon. My name is Philip Wleger and I own VDW and we do master plans and architectural work in about eight states. So we work primarily for the developer side of things, but we also do work for some cities as well. But most of the, of the master planning we do involves working with a group of investors typically and how things can get done through private-public partnerships. So that's what we've gotten involved with on this project due to the scale. If you look at the first slide, I don't know who's running the, do I have control of it here? Okay, go back to the first slide. Part any project of this scale, you know, first of all, we have to comprehend what we're trying to do. We knew that this was not a project that, that was, you know, we bring a couple of housing developers in and we turn it over to them and they each do their own plan of survey and present it. We knew this was a much bigger opportunity than that and due to its really strategic real opportunity to be a whole kind of community neighborhood center. It has the ability due to its location, thoroughfares that it's on actually becomes somewhat of business and services and hospitality center as well as a place for people to live. So those are the type of projects that we're typically involved in are very mixed-use development type projects. Typically, they're urban infill. So this one is unique because we're out in the middle of a field and it's been edges are a little different on this one because the edges are a little bit more wide open, but yet they're still challenging nonetheless. So you can see, I mean, it's kind of unique for you. I know when I've told a lot of people about this project and just in our most of them didn't even know that Johnston had some land up there and that's been very recent and Fritz worked on that. We're really excited about Johnston having something up there that is meaningful to the community and meaningful to the potential residents and the existing neighbors that live in the area, even though they're not necessarily in your jurisdiction, which is actually also very unique. You know, most of them are Grimes that are adjacent neighbors. But at the same point in time, creating opportunities that will be beneficial to them as neighbors. Obviously, this has been open area for a long, long time. And when one starts to change open area, it's always a little bit of a challenge for people to adjust to. So what we're saying is what if we were stronger and bolder than anyone would have thought? And this can be more than houses. This can actually truly be a little neighborhood center. And so that's the, that's the study we started to do. Literally looked at the physical context, the amenities, we studied services, we studied a course, traffic, all the things that are here and whether they can support that because we have to be able to finance this thing. And I work with hotels and other operations and if we don't have the right market support, we're just, we're wasting our time. Well, after doing those exercises, we learned that we, this is really a very special site and we can do something very special up there. And that's the reason for our presentation of a master plan, which is a concept plan to unite, so you start to understand how there's going to be opportunity for us to work together to strengthen this. And there's going to be public, private opportunities to make this a little bit better with some infrastructure and some other issues. Can we go to the next slide?
Trust the operator, we're just not certain about the machine.
This is just another view, yeah. This is another view of the site, kind of getting a little closer, starting to see, you know, it's this really big valley. I'm certain all of you know that over there. When you're coming up 141, you have this big valley and what grabs, what really grabbed us was this big open space that exists and how it's perceived as one approaches it from the south going to the north, which is going to be what most are going to be doing. It'll also service the neighborhoods to the north as well, but for the most part, mostly context of the neighbors are, are on the south. And it's this beautifully developed, naturally developed valley that is really beautiful and how it's going to unfold and how that directs how development can happen was part of it. Studied your vision plan extensively. You're a community that has been very active with your vision plan and have followed it, which is really neat too, because we work with a lot of communities that their vision plan gets put on a shelf and really doesn't, isn't looked at too much. But you have followed it a lot. Community amenities or your services, the housing, all the community needs. You know, obviously this site, exact location and the proximity, topographical features, very unique, a lot of hills, features of the site, water features, vegetation features, a lot of different features that we had to work with, edges, that means the exact sort of perimeter or boundary. How do we make it so all those people value what we're doing? Access, different access opportunities. Living configurations is a very, very, very big hot button and I'm certain you all know that today. How people live and work and thrive and play and all the functions people do in their lives. That's changing and different levels of density are changing. People want access to more things closer to them. Most studies are showing that people are going to be working more at home, even in office jobs over the next ten years and in ten years significantly more. So we're thinking about all those trends and all those movements that are happening on a, on a societal level as well. Sightlines, all these things are part of what the project is. So next slide. Next slide starts to show you the existing site on the left and our first zoning diagram on the right. And one of the things that really started to drive this project, and it's because of soil conditions, it's because of a lot of issues, was how much area we really need to have for parkland. And if you look there, we have about seventy acres total that's going to be park for this development, which is really, really unique and that's a high ratio. So that's a great opportunity. That's, that's something that we're trying to make as the center point. Definitely something that is a very important part of what this project is about. That's the green area you see. On the north and on the south, you can see that there's a little bit more traditional residential development and it's because of how they fade into the other neighborhood and what there's market demand for. And then there's a blue area with a red around it, right? Towner Drive. This is a real opportunity, we think, because Towner Drive, I don't know how much the city has been involved in, but the county definitely has and it's been an issue with the county because of erosion and some other issues in the upkeep of that road. They truly want to abandon that road. So we're looking at what kind of opportunities might exist for all of us to turn that into a major thoroughfare. That'd be a full boulevard type street that would service and, and set all the criteria about what this project is about. So it's a very strategic part of the project. And because of that, because of that major axes, that major corridor going through, that sets up other relationships. Obviously, we have 141 and you can see that there's some color coding of development along 141 that that's the lighter yellow tones that would be medium density type projects there. We're talking to a hotel operator, that's one of them we're looking at there as well as some other service type amenities as well as living. One of the big things that this project is going to be, it's about living number one. A project that maybe has been kind of an urban destination project in the Des Moines area is, is Frey Trail up in Ankeny that probably many of you are familiar with. That project is a destination project. We're going to be a living project, which means every building and every part of it is all about living. And that creates and fosters a completely different attitude. It also brings in young people, brings in, there's a large demographic of women that are raising children without a spouse or a husband and are raising them on their own. So there's some support services we can set up with this type of diagram and living conditions. So we're really looking at all types of living parts as part of what this master plan is about. Oh, but the, the orange area in the middle, that's what we're calling the core or the central portion. And it's really getting back to kind of simple towns when they were developed in Iowa, how they always had the, the main central district. And you have to do that to make those work. So we're looking at, we really think this thing will support ten, twelve restaurants in that area. And connecting those restaurants will be walking trails, bike trails, the entire community will be all connected via trails and walking and then going through the parks and all that as well. And again, on, we have some areas that actually flank the parks and we're looking at that as special opportunities. The type of housing that flanks a park, it's very important that the housing faces the park. You see a lot of housing in some of these areas and they got backyards facing the park. That's completely wrong. You need to have the front yards facing park because that makes the park have front entrances that are the, that are the visual edge of the park. So all those types of planning opportunities we're looking at. And there's opportunity for a little bit more density there too, like really nice row houses, that type of thing. That would be a great opportunity there. And so we're looking at that and we've got investors that are very excited about that as an opportunity. Next slide. This one is showing we missed one, there it is. This one is the, is the diagram that shows parks and recreation opportunities overlaid the site zoning map. How active this place is going to be. One of the real features, we've got seventy acres of recreation is, is water because it's a natural water runoff area. And we're developing water trails. We have over three quarters of a mile of literally trails that will be anywhere from sixty to a hundred foot wide that we could have different kinds of raft and boat events, all kinds of different type of community activities as well as some waiting areas. Have a splash pool, we have some, some, what could be some organized fields. We have other kinds of recreational opportunities that'll be skating rink for in the, that would be a splash pool in the summer and a skating rink in the winter. I mean, a lot of different things that this park will bring people together. Technicking, a lot of different things. So that is a very crucial part of this whole project and so that's why we have that. Also see that we have the park actually comes down very comprehensive approach. Next slide starts to show us what we call figured ground. That's where, that's where we start looking at density and not only buildings as an object, but spaces created by walls of buildings. That's a really crucial part of community planning. Is you're essentially, we're creating outside rooms as well as the buildings themselves that have, of course, interior spaces. But it's all about what are these negative spaces, that, the spaces that are between other buildings? That is the, that is the real strong part of this. And that's part of what that core is. And it starts to, you can start to see that it looks like, wow, there's some density there. So we're putting a lot of parking underneath and we're, we're scattering parking all around because the last thing we want to do is have this ever feel like it's an apartment building with a sea of parking around it. That, that's not a community type solution that we want here. We want this to, that every space is about spaces and perception of spaces and the experience of every part when you're walking. So.
Well, I don't want to cut you off, but I, our city council meeting usually starts
Ah, okay.
Running to that time. So we, this is very interesting. We want to hear it. I just, I just want to alert you that we're, we're kind of running over.
We have, we have two slides left.
Okay, great.
This starts to show some character massing. This starts to show you the scale of what we're trying to do here and how this does truly become a neighborhood village center with different living opportunities and let's go just kind of a close up, all kinds of dining opportunities and it's a very holistic village concept, neighborhood concept for the whole thing. So with that, since we're a little bit tight on time here, I'll open this up for discussion and I think I presented the concept of what we're doing, which again, we're, it, it's evolving because there's a lot of moving parts to this, but we're extremely excited about what this can mean to Johnston and can mean to the overall Des Moines metropolitan area.
Can you tell me a little bit more about what restrictions or guidelines Grimes might have given you about their, their property? And what they'd be willing to see happen?
That's, that's, that's very much a moving picture right now, but they've allowed us to have access roads through it. We haven't really talked about too much physical structures other than park-like structures. We've talked about that. We've sort of thought about as, you know, Des Moines Water Works Park? We've thought about it something like that. Or it's not just a leftover space, but it is a real space that is occupied and feels like a park. And the areas where there are pump stations, we can screen that with vegetation.
Did you, did you show them the water trails that you, you did?
Yeah.
Okay, because I'm, I'm not an engineer, so I don't know. I mean, you're, you're going to be, there's going to have to be water in those water trails.
And there are
And then they have a pumping station and I'm hoping it all works well together.
Yeah, yeah, they're actually there now.
Okay.
We're just actually, we're making a more kind of like, it just kind of happens to be a ravine over there. We're saying, hey, let's take advantage of the fact we have a lot of water there and let's make it a recreational opportunity, not just something we're trying to get rid of water. And so we're going to, we're going to work with all the water of our retention and detention for part of that as well.
Okay, that, I did see that on the aerials and I was like, what are those things?
Yeah.
So now you've explained it. Thank you.
Yep, yep, yep. But they've been very open, other than don't disrupt our wells. And of course, they don't want us building apartments and stuff like our condos on their property because that is their property, but we're working as a real partnership on how they would be involved with their parks and recreations.
Would it be possible for you to share your slide deck with us?
Yes.
Okay, and maybe send it to Cindy and then
Yeah, and we've sent it to Adam, the PDF of this. So
Okay, great.
This is something that you can all take a look at and read a little bit more of the, of the text that's on there. I'll just to give some highlights.
Great, well, you know, very excited about your commitment and your vision for this. I think, you know, as the council, you always hope that somebody who decides to develop a property brings a lot of passion and energy and sort of possible element that it can be and it's really clear.
That's very true. We have, I mean, the, the group that I'm working with, they've all been very open to really you know, saying, what can we do with this? And Fritz obviously lives right next door to this and he's like, I want to make this something really special. I've been walking this valley for twenty years.
Been hearing that.
So, so this has been a really, really fun and I'm so happy that you appreciate how excited we are and, and the true passion that we have in this because we're making everything very conscious about why we do it and who it affects and who best use. That, that can be a cliche, but we're truly, really analyzing things and thinking through it.
Yeah, you know, this area is, while it's in kind of unincorporated Polk County, it is in the Johnston school district.
That's right.
And so like
Yeah, and it's Johnston property now.
Right, and, and well, that's a good point too, yeah. And so like my son has a really good friend who lives just north of, of kind of you take Towner Drive to that first road and so we're over there quite a bit and it's, you know, I've always, I've been kind of waiting for the family to contact me and say, hey, you know, but I haven't heard anything so far, so that, that's a good sign. Sure, sure, sure.
Yeah, this is the first time that this has actually gotten out.
No, I, I, but they, but certainly there are, people are aware that something's going to happen.
Yeah, it's inevitable that, that, you know, that, that farmer is ready to retire. It's inevitable something's going to happen.
Right.
Fortunately, Fritz and others said, we have to do more than just be a broker of a deal. We have to make a special place. And that's how we got involved and their receptiveness and their excitement toward it has fed us and we're extremely excited about what this place can be.
Before we wrap up, either Fritz or Phil, what do you see as kind of the next steps?
We're, we're working this from our development side in terms of investors. We wanted to present this as an open concept because we want to, we want to say, yes, we've met with council and they like what they see. So, so we're waiting for some of your input that allows us to really start proceeding with some of the other parts so that we can get back with you on a lot more details and how, and, and where we need to work together.
I don't know that enough information's presented to us yet for us to give you have some conversation about.
And, you know, and obviously, you know, you, I think, were attended that meeting that they had right here in this room a few weeks ago with for DOT and all the other folks and the folks from Snyder talked about the 141, you know, figuring that all out. So it'll be interesting to see kind of, I don't know if you've had any conversations with Snyder at all about it. That, I mean, I think, you know, it'll be how that sort of fits in with the overall master plan of that section, I think, will certainly if we need to, that we need to participate in those conversations.
That will have to become a controlled intersection because it's going to have that, you know, and so, and that, that will help us and we're, we're looking at even, even as a big plan, where the, where the three major control points might be and actually getting the, the speed limit down to forty-five, fifty as opposed to sixty-five along there, that's going to help too. And, and it'll happen once people see that there's a reason. It's just right now you can't control people because there's no reason for them to go slower. And the engineer made that in his announcement. He goes, I don't think we can do that. Well, you can't if there's no reason. So we'll, if there's context and things that, that make it appear that you're just not out in the country, people will behave and perform differently.
I just have one comment. I did like the way you brought the green space right up to Beaver Creek. I think Beaver Creek is an amazing asset for Johnston. There's a lot of talk, I'm on the Beaver Creek watershed management group and we can do a lot for our water and we can do a lot for recreation potentials in the county and, and in our city. So bringing that green, connecting that green space, that big, large green space to Beaver Creek is a huge, huge bonus as far as I'm concerned.
We agree. And did you know there's actually oh, yeah, probably from a culvert that actually serves some back and forth. So we're looking at how we can work with that because we want to make that as part of the, part of the experience of living here. That access to the other side and, and Beaver Creek Golf Course. Beautiful amenity.
Just, just a note for the city council and developers. The follow-up 141 study meeting is scheduled for August 18th at 5:30. And that, we, we, I think about six weeks ago or whatever, they had the meeting in this room. Meeting, and I'm not sure what the agenda for that is yet, but that, it is August 18th. So that's coming up and we should hear more about where that study is.
And will that be back here again as well or?
It says the Saterville Training Room, which is the base room.
But it's in the city, it's here in this building. Now that we've presented it to you, we can talk to them.
There you go.
We didn't want to, we didn't want to relay to them the gravity of this intersection until we had discussed with you, other than to independent investors. So now that we've done that with you, this is a public issue and so we'll start doing that as well. We'll start working with traffic because that's a crucial part of this thing.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, we have completed the agenda for the work session.